Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is 9:30. Today is August 10, 2023. My name is Mike Kelly, and I'm the Chair of the Board of the Johnson County Commissioners. I'd like to welcome you to today's meeting and ask the Clerk to first call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us today. I'm going to ask that you join me in checking that your cellphone or any other noise-making device is on silent. And thank you for your courtesy. Due to the time-sensitive pressing nature of a few matters, we are going to hold public comments until those matters and a special PBC meeting have been held. It will be brief, so thank you very much for your patience. I know that's outside the order that a lot of people are used to, but we will be having public comments today after just a few brief items. So with that, there are no notes for the record today, and we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is just, are the Commissioners ready? Commissioner Allen Brand, do you have a motion?
I do, and we're in the Special Public Building Commission. Is that what we're in?
No, we are in our regular agenda at this time.
Oh, great. I'm sorry. I moved to approve the minutes as written.
A friendly amendment, can it be the consent agenda?
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me start over.
Okay.
I moved to approve the consent agenda as written.
Hanslick second.
Moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Seeing no questions, I'd ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Okay, aye. I have seven votes in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. At this time, I'd like to invite Leslie Friedel, as well as Elizabeth Bergman and Kevin Wimpy. They are here to address Resolution Number 066-23. And this is the first of four items regarding the issuance of bonds. Ms. Friedel, good morning.
Good morning. Does Linda need to read the item first?
Linda, I'm going to ask that you go ahead and give us the number. We read these items at the agenda review last week, but the number was to be determined based upon the bond sale. So if you would give us the number for Resolution Number 066-23, please.
$11,730,000.
Ms. Friedel.
Hi, I'm Leslie Friedel with Budget and Financial Planning, and I just am here to report on the results of the bond sale. The first issue was for general obligation internal improvement bonds for the airport improvements. We did do better than we had anticipated in our preliminary numbers. Elizabeth Bergman is here to talk about some of the good news related to that. We were reaffirmed AAA by all three agencies. We ended up having five bidders on this issue, and we came in at 4.17. And we are, which is great for 30 years for airport improvements. And I will step aside unless somebody has some questions and let Elizabeth give a few comments, our municipal advisor.
Okay, great. Question? Commissioner O'Hara?
Yes, just procedural. We are now in our PBC meeting, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. My apologies.
So we are not in the PBC meeting?
No.
We are going into our action agenda.
Correct.
And we're going to go all the way through our action agenda prior to, prior to public comments? I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, my plan, unless there's an objection from the Commission, is to handle these time-sensitive matters, which are these bond items, and then the special PBC, which is again a companion item. And then we'll return to this meeting and have public comment.
Okay, so for clarification to the folks sitting here, there are several items that we discussed in our agenda review last week on issuing bonds. And so I just wanted to let the folks sitting here and the folks watching understand a little bit about what's going on. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and thank you, Leslie Friedel. And now I'll invite Elizabeth Bergman to give us some information on what's going on.
Thank you so much, Chair and Board. I am really happy to be with you today with such a good news on this bond sale. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight in addition to what has already been said is the affirmation of the AAA rating with stable outlook from all three rating agencies, Moody's, Standard &amp; Porch, and Fitch, thank you, took a second there. And I think it's a particularly impressive feat, given that the county plans to half again its debt over the next couple of years. So the amount of debt, given the Nelson Treatment Plant, has grown quite a bit. And the offsetting items from the point of view of the rating agencies are so strong that the additional debt didn't have an impact on the ratings. So the rating reports factor very strong management, financial management, that has resulted in a very strong financial position, given annually operating surpluses and the expectation that that will continue. The vibrant economic area that Johnson County is, particularly with continued expectations of that with Panasonic, and really a spectacular rating presentation from Debt Manager Friedel and Budget Director Simes. So really, I always joke with them after I'm done that we should give a class in how to do a rating agency presentation because they just have it down. So it was a really tremendous outcome on the ratings, AAA stable across the board. That puts you in the company of, you know, a couple, several dozen other local government issuers across the country. So really rarefied air. The other thing I just wanted to say is that we had some consultation about when to sell the bonds. There was some expectation that maybe we'd try to do it last week in conjunction with the PBC regular meeting. But what we've noticed is that right after the Fed meeting, the municipal market's a little bit unsettled, and so we've seen some interest rates hikes. And so we wanted to give it a little time to cool off and sell this week as opposed to last week, and that was really a good outcome. That saved us about 10 basis points compared to what we would have had last week, which is about $650,000 of interest cost. So thank you for being flexible with your schedule.
All right. Elizabeth, thank you very much for that presentation. Commissioner Allen Brand, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and when you're ready, I do have a motion, but I would like to make a comment congratulating you and to the staff. And with those ratings and the amount of money that you saved is tremendous. So thank you so much for that, and when you're ready, I do have a motion.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you. So you had anticipated what rate and that, and how many basis points? Just tell me the difference between the two. It's the first you had anticipated.
On this particular issue, because it was 30 years in tax exempt, we were anticipating about 4.7. And so we ended up about 4.2.
4.2, oh, that's excellent.
And we did save quite a bit of money. This is great news for the airport because they, of course, are trying to pay for this with their leasehold revenues. And then the county increment of the taxes that we would not have gotten if the improvements had not been made anyway.
Okay, and this is, this is the $11,730,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And then also for the same improvements, but a taxable component because of the portion of the infrastructure that is related to those exact improvements where there will be business held, that will be the next agenda item.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, how about a motion, Commissioner Allen Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved to approve and adopt Resolution Number 066-23 as presented to authorize issuance of general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing certain airport improvements and authorizing the execution of documents related thereto.
Hanslick second.
A move by Commissioner Allen Brand, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Any further questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. The resolution passes. Now on to Resolution Number 067-23. And again, if the Clerk would inform us of the number for these bonds under Resolution Number 067-23.
$5,110,000.
Very good. Ms. Friedel, report on this resolution?
So on this particular resolution, like I said, this is a taxable component to the airport improvements. We did have only one bidder, but actually the results were, again, quite good, better than we anticipated. We got 5.27. I'm trying to read my small print here. Yes, 5.27. Originally, we were estimating 5.7. I think I did make a mistake earlier. I think it was 4.4 down to 4.2 on the tax exempt. There might have been a little bit of a difference there. But at any rate, we did save on both occasions, and there's really great news for airport and its ability to manage that debt service with the anticipated revenue with this, with these rates.
Very good. Ms. Bergman, anything you'd like to add on this one? Okay. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Mr. Chair, again, I want to make a comment. Great job. Thank you for that savings. And when you're ready, I have a motion.
Any questions or comments on Resolution Number 067-23? Seeing none, go ahead, Commissioner Allen Brand.
I moved to approve and adopt Resolution Number 067-23 as presented to authorize the issuance of taxable general obligation bonds for the purpose of financing certain airport improvements and authorizing the execution of documents related thereto. Final version, oop, sorry.
Hanslick second.
Still moved by Commissioner Allen Brand, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick.
I was going to read the minutes.
Any further, any final questions? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Resolution passes. Next is Resolution Number 068-23. This is for, again, a bond sales related to household hazardous waste facility and MEDAC projects. If the Clerk would please inform us of the statement of bond dollars. Okay. Ms. Friedel?
Good morning again, Chair and Commissioners. This is the PBC item. This one is sold over 20 years. It's also tax exempt, so we did see better rates. We came in at, let me turn my page real quick, 3.8%. And we had, I think we had three bidders for this one. And actually, on both of the PBC issues, the par amount did change, and the same bidder won, KeyBank, Capital One, in both cases. And I could go back and tell you who won on the GEO bonds if you were interested. I failed to do that earlier.
Thank you. I think one question we'll get is the number on the bond changed from what was originally into our agenda? Do you mind addressing that?
So we did receive a premium on the sale, so we resized the par value so that we receive only the exact amount we need for the projects. And the premium that is shown there goes into the project account, and then we don't have to pay back so much. And so this is a win-win in this case to the county because it will save us money on our debt service between the rates and then not having to issue as much debt.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner O'Hara?
Can someone remind me? I know that we had overages on this because of increase in cost of construction, if I'm remembering correctly. Can, can anyone remind me what the original estimate was? And now we're at 15, I guess the cost was 15 million.
So the amount being bonded has never changed?
Correct. I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the estimates, the beginning estimates and then the final, then the final estimates.
So the MEDAC Olatha project has not changed at all? So that amount has stayed the same at $9,892,000? The PBC household hazardous waste was revised to $3,628 million, with $610,000 being funded from reserves. That does not include the land that we did purchase with general fund reserves that was on top of that.
Okay, but as I remember, that we had an original estimate, and because of increase in costs, and I believe that we actually increased the size of the facility. So I'm just, I'm just curious as to what those, the difference in those numbers.
$610,000 for the household hazardous waste project plus the cost of the land acquisition.
Okay.
And then for the MEDAC Lenexa project, we added $1,662,000 from general fund reserves, again, for the overages. And you can remember that in part on both of these, some of the sizing and the increase in, and I do have Tony here from Facilities, Tony Baron, the Director of Facilities, if you have specific questions as well. But some of this was due to the size of the building that we acquired and also the changes in programming, either to fit the building and because of some of the things that we realized as we went through this, due to needing to have certain rooms done differently because of COVID and other reasons to give people the needed privacy or protection.
And Leslie, this is Penny. May I add to that? You are correct, Commissioner O'Hara. There were cost escalation costs on both projects, as well as the reasons that she stated. So I don't have the specific numbers. I don't know if Tony does. But you're remembering correctly that we did come back and give you updates.
Okay, so Tony, do you have, do you have those numbers?
Again, I really think it's the 1662.
And then plus, plus the land acquisition?
Yes, plus the land acquisition. And if I remember correctly, and this is just a memory, I think we spent 1.25 on the land acquisition for the two properties.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
1.25 million.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions regarding the Resolution Number 068-23? No. Commissioner Allen Brand?
Oh, okay.
So I thought I saw a finger.
Today's going to do the amount.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved to adopt Resolution Number 068-23 as presented to authorize the issuance of the Series 2023A bonds by the Public Building Commission of Johnson County, Kansas, and authorizing the execution of documents related thereto.
Allen Brand, second.
A move by Commissioner Hanslick and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Are further questions or comments? Commissioner Hanslick?
Just, just another request for just clarification. If I'm, if I'm recalling, we were able to get both of these properties together and were able to get some savings in that regard and in the right locations that we wanted.
Yes, absolutely correct. Those, the properties were well suited for us, difficult to find, and we were fortunate to get them.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments? Seeing none, can the Clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. I have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
Very good. Let's take up now Resolution Number 069-23. This is, again, is a bond amount for the Marion Plaza Library. And if the Clerk would announce the statement of bond dollars? Thank you very much, Ms. Friedel. Thanks for your report on this. Again, the number's slightly below the $7 million. Would you mind addressing that, please?
Yes, so again, we did receive a premium on the sale, so we resized it so that we did not borrow more money than needed. In this particular case, the library has already contributed significant cash to help hold down the debt cost on this, and so we are only bonding for the project cost just under $7 million. This chart is on your forms. It's like 6.8 million just for the project. And then there is about that much in cash as well.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Hara?
And what's the rate on this?
The rate on this was also 3.8. So we did very well on the 20-year tax exempt PBC. And we had, I think we had great news, to be honest.
Very good. Thank you.
And I would say also a thank you to Kevin Wimpy for allowing us to use shorter motions than the original issued statements.
Amen.
Makes it easier for everybody. Commissioner Hanslick?
I'm glad to make a motion regarding this item.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. I moved to adopt Resolution Number 069-23 as presented to authorize the issuance of the Series 2023B bonds by the Public Building Commission of Johnson County, Kansas, and authorizing the execution of documents related thereto.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Any final questions? If not, I'd ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven votes in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
That's correct.
All right, very good. All right, at this time, we have scheduled the special PBC meeting for 10:00 a.m., and we want to take it up at 10:00 a.m., which means we have about nine minutes, which is not enough time to accommodate all the requests for public comment this morning. Now, if it's the Board's direction, we can take a quick nine-minute break. I don't know if, otherwise, we might handle one more item that's on the agenda.
Just one more item?
If that's the case, is Mr. Otto here? Mr. Aaron Otto is here. There's not an objection. Let's take up item number 10 at this time. Is that all right with the Clerk?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. Aaron Otto is here, County Manager's Office. We are here to discuss the allocation of SLFRF funding for funding wastewater and infrastructure projects at the New Century Commerce Center. Mr. Otto, thank you for your robust report on this matter at our agenda review. Any further report you'd like to provide regarding this infrastructure project?
Just give a one-minute refresher that's on the map here. So the segment that's in green has already been installed, so that is going back to reimbursing, and that was not part of the debt issuance that you just approved in the last motion. The blue, light blue, that's the aviation reserve, and the orange, that will be new additions that will be put in, assuming this allocation goes forward. And then, and this is all wastewater. That supports the aviation plus Phase 2, 3 development. And if we go to the next slide, this is the water connection from 151st Street down to, oh, sorry, I always get these out of order. There's two generators being replaced. We talked about those last week. One didn't exist before and is being installed. This one's replacing at least a 38-year-old generator at New Century for water pressure. And then the last slide will show you where a proposed water main line's coming in to bring a new source of water onto the east side to ensure Phase 2, 3 has sufficient water to move forward. That's what's encapsulated in this nearly $4 million request, and happy to take questions.
Mr. Otto, thank you. Wastewater infrastructure is directly listed as an appropriate funding under the SLFRF program, correct?
Wastewater and domestic water service, correct? So inbound, outbound, yep.
And there's a rationale for utilizing this project as a good fit for this SLFRF funding, not only for the impact on ratepayers, but also because of the economic impacts of New Century?
Ultimately, the way I would look at this is this has always been some kind of county-owned infrastructure. Wastewater will inherit the water, wastewater mains, just like with the debt that was issued. You know, roads go to public works, streetlights stay with the airport. So it's all publicly maintained assets, if you, if you will. And yes, it does help provide for economic development to put ground into leases in order to try to generate revenues to keep the airport as self-sufficient as possible in the future. There were a couple of headwinds that have hit project number one or phase number one, interest rates. While we heard they were good in that last issuance, they were not as good as we were, you know, projecting back in 2020. I mean, they've literally, I found one of the first sheets from Baker Tilly, our financial advisors, that showed 2.8% interest rates on non-taxable. And you just heard that they went out for 4.27, which we're super excited about, but it's a big swing, to say the least, between what was projected in 2020 and how much the world has changed in the last few years. The good news on those bonds, they do have a callable position at 10 years to refinance, both the taxable and non-taxable, is my understanding. So that will be a potential improvement in the future.
Sure, I hope so. Commissioner O'Hara?
Thank you. I think, just remind me, I believe last week that you said that our cost estimates, with the increase in interest rates, et cetera, was $7 million over?
There were two factors in that. It was near seven. The biggest part of that was interest. The other part of it was, if we go back three slides, there's 159th Street. There is an improvement to the road that's on the right-hand side there that will need to be made. That is still being costed out, but is projected to be more in the $750,000 to $800,000 range. So that's the other component of it. So interest is a big part of it.
Okay, so we're, we're $7 million approximately over our initial cost estimates. And I am very concerned on the 30 cents a square foot that the, the building's owners are going to be charged for property taxes, which is far below, it's far, it's far below the 25% that we had, in my, in my opinion, according to, to the numbers that were ran, that we, we aren't, we aren't getting, we aren't getting our bang for the buck. And I think that we are taking federal dollars coming in and, and masking a little over half of these overages. And, you know, unfortunately, we have the, we have the New Century Building, Office Building, that New Century Link Office Building that's costing us about, what, $1.5 million a year? We're really running, like you said, we're running into some headwinds at New Century Airport. And I just think as we go forward that we're going to have to be extremely judicious. And I believe that a review on the tax incentives that we're doling out to the, to the end users has to be reassessed, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Hara, I respect your opinion. I appreciate you expressing that. One question, though, Mr. Otto. This is a significant development and improvement for this area. Will it complete the major sanitary sewer development for this project? Or will there be future sanitary sewer improvements needed? And what are the plans to meet those needs?
Thank you for that. The answer is yes. There are two more segments of sewer to be in place. If you look at where it says future building H and G, kind of in the north part of the center top, there'll be a wastewater line that connects down where the blue meets green to connect to those two buildings. There'll also be a line to finish the hangers that run along to the, kind of up and to the left. So this touches the next segment of land to be developed. Just as a quick reminder, building A is built, building B1 is being finished. finished. Building B2, you approved, I think, three months ago. So the pad's being created for that in anticipation with our private partner. No public county dollars in that will go vertical soon. So those three buildings are done. The only thing left in Phase One is Building C, which is a million-three building that could be split in half. And then after that, that's when you'd start seeing the movement south of 165th Street. So this does the next set of lands you'd go to, but it is not quite complete to the east side.
Very good. One quick add on, Mr. Otto. When will the airport realize the expansion of the hangar facilities, kind of in the north central, or not north, excuse me, the west central part? The map's going the wrong direction.
No, I hate maps that don't have north to the top. North is to the right here. This happens all the time with this map. So New Century's experienced a real boom in hangers. There have been one, two, three, four large hangers, one small, another small, midsize being built, and one more that's permitted at New Century. And so the need to come over and build a parallel taxiway off the parallel runway is very high. And that's what would serve these different hangar models here on the east, or on the east side. The kicker is about a $1.7 million hammerhead that would connect and start that taxiway off of the parallel runway. We have identified the potential of doing that in 2026. If dollars could become available earlier, we will. But that's, that's the first opportunity where there's a break. Let's see, how do I, 26 to 27 is where it's anticipated to be. I could explain why, but it'd probably be
You're looking for federal funding for the improvement.
Correct. And it would be one, the airports always get what's called entitlement dollars. They usually roll into a big project. There may be a gap here where we don't have a big project. So we could take those entitlement dollars and put it towards that, try to get some dollars out of KDOT, and then probably some airport money. And that's what it's going to take to get a million seven.
Thank you.
That is not a directly eligible project because it would, in theory, the first time only serve one hangar.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but, you know, again, you know, our airport has gone to a national recognition out there. The air and also rail have increased. This building, you know, we inherited a lot of this in the 1942 without doing these improvements. And the improvements that you're doing on the hangers and the rentals, we're starting to see all that come in. And these dollars were allocated for use. And I much rather see them, they're going to go somewhere, and there's strict criteria, and this meets the criteria. And I much rather keep this money in our county than to let it go back. And so I see this as a good use of putting this money to work. And having more rail and more train helps keep those big trucks off our railways. And this is just a good transportation. And, and I also would be remiss if I didn't say that, you know, Senator Morand and Congressman Sharice Davis has been great partners helping us with federal funds, improving our, our, you know, the rail, and then also helped me the
Air Traffic Control Tower?
Air Traffic Control Center. So thank you very much, which is inadequate. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Commissioner Allen Brand's comments. And following on to that, I mean, the purpose of the, this development and this investment, this development is ultimately to save taxpayers' money so we do not have to underwrite the cost of the airport. And for how many years was our airport the only, was it the only one in the state that was self-sufficient? Others are completely undergirded by taxpayer money.
So 2005 to 2020, the airports were financially self-sufficient. There's two ways you get there. One, what is the requirement to run the airport? And two, what is the development around that supports through private sector development paying ground rents? And this, to put in perspective, this was not taxable land beforehand that was earning about $138 an acre for a hay lease or commodity agriculture. Now that's been converted to 13.5 cents per foot under each of these properties going forward. And I believe, yes, your two airports, there might have been one other in the state out of the 143 public use airports were amongst that group. It's a very elite crowd to be with. And it's, it's going to take a slug to get back to that level because of some of that aging infrastructure that Commissioner Allen Brand talked about.
Well, thank you. I, I've been amazed over the years watching the, the thought and the strategy that has gone into making this kind of development possible to continue to be able to support, self, self-support for the, excuse me, the airport to be self-sufficient. And I appreciate the, the leadership of the Airport Commission and of the airport staff who've allowed, allowed this to happen and brought this forward. So thank you for that explanation.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Chair. I have a motion when you're ready. But I, my comment is, thank you, Mr. Otto. And I echo the comments of Commissioner Hanslick with the Airport Commission and, and all the work that they do. I think this is very advantageous for us to follow through with.
Thank you. And Commissioner Myers, everyone's had at least one chance to talk. You can go ahead with your motion, then we'll do a final round of comments or questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. I move the board authorize the allocation of coronavirus SLFRF received from the United States Department of the Treasury in the amount of $3,967,300 for the purpose of funding water and wastewater infrastructure, infrastructure projects at the New Century Commerce Center.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Myers, seconded by Allen Brand. Commissioner O'Hara, question?
Yes. Could, could this money have been used to reimburse the county for other infrastructure projects such as roads, et cetera, that could have reduced our budget and reduced the mill levy? Is, is that possible?
In this account, no. My understanding is it was eligible for water, which the county does not do domestic water except for at New Century. It could be used for wastewater, which would affect a district but not the whole county. And it could be potentially used for some broadband expansion. But I, trust me, I asked about roads and a few others, and the answer was
Okay. And then I just want to read just one little note. And so that people understand that money coming from the federal government is not free. We, we have huge deficits at the national level. And just real quick, the biggest increase in federal outlays so far this year has been net interest on the soaring federal debt, a rise from 146 billion to 572 billion. That the total interest, total interest debt, total interest cost is nearly double all corporate tax revenue so far this year of $319 billion. So our debt at the national level is just burying us. So we just cannot be looking at these federal dollars as free dollars. It's, there is, there's a tremendous cost.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Hara. Any further questions or comments? Okay. Well, let's call the question. If the clerk would please take the roll.
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner O'Hara.
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
And Chairman Kelly.
Aye. Seven votes in favor, none against. Second system with your count?
That's correct.
Motion passes unanimously. And we're going to recess at this time for the special PBC meeting. If the clerk would let us know when we can start that meeting, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. We're in recess.